Hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, October 27, 2025. Mr. Trudgen, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And Councilmember Schroeder had indicated prior to this meeting to the city that she wouldn't be able to attend this evening. So we're running with just four councilmembers this evening, but we'll manage. We have with us at the dais, by way of introduction, our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who is a little bit closer to me this evening as a result, on my right, and our city manager, Pat Trudgen, who's on my left at the other end of the dais. And we'll make introductions of other staff and participants in the meeting as those agenda items come forward. I do want to note, for members of the public who are here this evening, if you need to follow along with the meeting agenda, there are extra copies of the agenda available on the back table underneath the clock by the back door. And there is also one copy of all the meeting materials that has to be shared by everybody, but it is available to the public if you need to reference any of the materials that the council is considering this evening. So I wanted to make those two announcements and also let folks know if you do have a cellphone to be sure and silence it or otherwise make sure it doesn't disrupt our meeting this evening. And with that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, first on our agenda this evening, after those formalities, is the approval of tonight's agenda. And as always, I'll check with Mr. Trudgen from a staff perspective, are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, staff, there's no changes to the agenda.
All right, then I'll check, as I always do, with the council to see if the council has any requested changes to the agenda this evening or any items that the council would like to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration. It does not appear to be the case. We'll do one check on the agenda with members of the public. We do have, at the end of our agenda this evening, Section 10, which is known as the Consent Agenda. These items, these four items, involve approval of payments, receipt of a report, as well as some contract approvals. Normally, those are taken up as a single motion at the end of the meeting with a limited opportunity for input from the public because they're rather administrative. But we always do want to check with folks if you are here for one of those items. This would be the time to let us know, and we'll take that item up earlier in the meeting so that you could make your comments or ask your questions if you're here for that item. So I'll check, is anyone here for an item in Section 10 of tonight's agenda, otherwise known as the Consent Agenda? It does not appear to be the case. With that, then, we will proceed to consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero, and we have our agenda this evening. Next on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. This is for general public comment, not related to items on our agenda. We will have an opportunity for public comment as agenda items come up, but at the start of each meeting, we do provide an opportunity for general public comment that may be on matters of interest to people in the community or related to city business, but once again, not being considered this evening. So I'll check, is there anyone here this evening to speak under general public comment as opposed to on agenda items that may come up this evening? Does not appear to be the case, then. So then we'll move on with our agenda. Our next item on the agenda, then, is to look at recognitions and donations. We have one recognition this evening, which is a proclamation related to Native American Heritage Month. I'll read the proclamation and then a motion from the council to approve it would be in order. The proclamation reads as follows: "The city of Roseville is located on land obtained through a broken treaty that was first home to the Dakota and Ojibwe people and where many continue to reside, and whereas the city of Roseville recognizes that this treaty entitled non-native people to live and work on traditional native lands, and whereas despite centuries-long and ongoing erasure of indigenous people from American history and unjust federal policies of assimilation and termination that ripped children from their families, Native American people have persevered in this country, and whereas indigenous people of this land upon which our country and city now stand have provided values and ideals that have become ingrained in American culture, including respect for the natural environment and a rich cultural history, and whereas the city of Roseville is committed to promoting racial equity, equality, and justice as fundamental aspects of a safe and welcoming community, and to undo the longstanding trauma and harm of unjust government policies of assimilation and termination that have cost countless lives and displaced and broken up even more countless families. And whereas the city of Roseville invites all members of the community to join the federal government in celebrating and acknowledging the 2025 National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas this observance offers increased opportunity to better understand Native American heritage, past and present contributions to our communities, and to honor the many indigenous people who have sacrificed their lives and customs for the growth of our nation, including service in our military, now therefore be resolved that the city of Roseville hereby proclaims the month of November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month in the city."
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Graff to approve that proclamation. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Strawn?
I'd just like to thank our city staff who continue to hold up and make the Wild Rice Festival an excellent celebration within our city to honor. So these aren't just words that we speak once a year, but are part of what we do. There are dance events and our summer programs at the park and such, and I just want to make sure people realize that it is an ongoing community. It's not a past thing, but there are people who represent natives in our community who really appreciate our ongoing dedication to their perseverance.
All right, is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero, and that proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our business items for this evening. Our first business item is Item 7A, which is to consider adopting a revised debt policy for the city. And we have our Finance Director, Michelle Petrick, with us this evening to bring this proposed revision before us for our consideration. Welcome, Ms. Petrick.
Good evening. Best practices require that we periodically review our policies, and we've been reviewing, over the last five years, we've reviewed the various policies that the city has. And this year, because we did issue debt for the fire engine, I took a look at the debt policy and brought this to the Finance Commission because the statutory debt limit was raised in 2008 from 2% to 3%, and our policy hadn't been updated to reflect that change. So we've made that change, and we are referencing the statutory, the statute. There are a few other minor cosmetic changes. We did remove, under the purpose statement, the maintain the best possible Moody's and Standard and Poor's credit rating because that really doesn't belong in the purpose statement. We have it down in the policy where we will maintain the best possible credit rating. At one point in time, the city did both bond rating agencies. We now only do Standard and Poor's. There really is no need to incur the extra cost to get the bonds rated by both agencies. So those were the main changes that we made to the debt policy. And with that, I guess if you have any questions or want to make any changes...
All right. Hopefully, we don't have too many changes this evening. Are there questions from the council for our Finance Director on the policy proposal? I just wanted to note that it is our policy not to have terms of financing that are longer than the expected life of the thing being financed, which is a very reasonable policy. That's not changing. Some of the wording is tweaked around that, but then the other is that the city endeavors to issue debt for the shortest possible period while maintaining the payments at a level that is affordable to the funding source, which is the taxpayers of the city. So that's a good part of our policy that we did, once again, adjust some of the wording on.
Yes.
So for folks in the public who may be concerned about cities issuing debt, those are important parts of our policy. And then I would also note that while the state law changed the debt limit for cities from 2% to 3% of their taxable property.
Yes.
The city is well below that in terms of the amount of debt that we've issued. I don't know what the number is, but I'm having a feeling it's under 1%.
Oh, it's well below 1%.
Okay. Is there a zero after the decimal? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Which is typical for cities. I don't know, well, maybe there are cities out there that approach their debt limit, but gosh, that would be, that would be challenging. Maybe they have less taxable value to charge against.
These are...
All right. With that, I'll check if there are any other questions or comments from the council. Otherwise, we would open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on these amendments to the city's debt policy? Does not appear to be the case. Councilmember Strawn?
Very minimal. I asked Mr. Trudgen, there is the very first line item and policy has a period after it, and none of the subsequent ones do. So whatever the correction is, that they all are the same.
Yeah.
All right. Does council wish to make a motion on this policy adoption? Actually, I believe there's a resolution which would, by its action, adopt the policy. So the resolution...
So moved.
...is the second attachment. All right.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Graff, to adopt the resolution which amends the debt policy as outlined, including the punctuation change as necessary for consistency. Discussion on the motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
Nothing further.
Right, Councilmember Graff is the seconder of the motion.
I think pointing out the low amount that we have borrowed is really important for the republic to understand because we don't want to be maxed out in our borrowing. Thanks for doing that.
All right, other discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero, and that policy change is adopted. Next is Item 7B under Business Items, which is to consider action based on the Parks and Rec Commission's recommendation regarding the Aldine Street right-of-way. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Trudgen to introduce this item for the council's consideration.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be real brief. There's lots of information in your packet, and this is not the first time you've chatted about this item. The issue in front of the council tonight is actually to formally take up the Park and Recreation Commission recommendation of September 2nd from their meeting. It did appear in front of the city council on September 15th as part of a joint meeting and made the following recommendation. They had two motions in consideration of the Aldine right-of-way. Motion number one was the Parks and Recreation Commission acknowledges that the Aldine Street right-of-way has value for the Parks and Recreation System, and that motion passed. The second motion was the Parks and Recreation Commission recommends that the city council direct staff to engage a consultant to conduct a feasibility study for a non-traditional pathway through the right-of-way, evaluating, one, pathway alignment options and specific tree impacts, and that a final decision be made immediately following the receipt of that study. So the question in front of the council really is tonight as to what to do with that recommendation and any action you want to direct staff for any follow-up based on that recommendation. We do, in the staff report, have some estimates of what that cost would be. Top of my head, I think it was between $3,000 and $10,000. Hard to exactly know until we get some bids out there, but that's just a piece of information for you to consider. So with that, we do have staff available for questions, but this is really the council level now to have a discussion and provide its direction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. And it is correct in the report, it does say $3,000 to $10,000 as the estimate, and the funding source would be either potentially planning dollars in the capital improvement program funds or potentially park improvement program funds also within the capital improvement program. So they would be basically capital funds that are available to the city for capital purposes such as this might be. With that, are there questions from the council for staff at this time? Councilmember Strawn?
I wanted to double-check. So, Mr. Trudgen, if something were to move forward after this next step with actually moving forward with a park process in this area, would the funds be coming from levy dollars or from the park improvement funds or the money set aside from new developments for park development?
I think what's being proposed is the capital fund, which is levy-supported, so it would be levy dollars.
Okay.
And maybe just to clarify, it would be existing collected levy dollars, not adding additional dollars to the levy for that purpose?
Yes, that's correct. We have fund balances for a variety of capital funds, including park funds, so that's not where it would come from.
Got it.
Existing balances, tax levies.
All right. Other questions? Councilmember Bauer?
In the September 2nd staff report, it notes, under the cross considerations, the most top state here, the Public Works Department preliminary analysis estimated a hardscape pathway would cost somewhere between $84,000 and $177,000. Is that just the estimate for the actual pathway and not taking, I mean, I'm curious to know what that's taking into account. I know there's some discussion here also about the grades and whatnot. I was wondering if this takes into account any retaining walls or other work needs to be done. That's not known, we thought, another time.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if I can fully answer that. I think certainly that was with a hardscape path, so that was with an asphalt and clearing eight feet, six to eight feet wide and the tree impact. Do not know about specific grading, but I'm sure that would be factored in because that area is a little bit uneven. But I think that is just an estimate doing a traditional path, which we traditionally do elsewhere in the city, given the site conditions. And that's just an estimate, and so certainly we would want to look at that number closer. But I think that, as far as I understood it, what that estimate was, and Mr. Frehammer isn't here tonight, and I don't know if Mr. Johnson can add any more to that from his perspective, but I think that's what it was. Thank you.
I do seem to recall that there was, and I don't know if it entered into those numbers, but there was consideration of whether or not to do an improvement to the crossing of Rose Lawn at the south end. And that may have been part of what the range was, as I sort of recall from that discussion, but I don't specifically recall if that was part of that or if that was in addition to that. But certainly, I think one of the factors that I recall the Public Works folks mentioning was the width of the pathway and the material of construction and the extent to which there is the need to do such things as retaining walls and things like that. So I think that all factored into the range, the fairly wide range that was given at that time. And once again, that estimate was for a paved pathway meeting paved pathway standards, which is not necessarily what the Parks and Rec Commission had recommended to the council. Other questions for staff from councilmembers? Councilmember Bauer?
We noted that, you know, there's different options for doing this path and making, we do have a requirement to make it accessible, and that can be accomplished a couple of different ways. Do we have any responsibilities for maintaining this pathing as well? I'm thinking snow because we're noting that if it's a smaller width, I think it's talking about 48 inches. I don't believe we have any equipment that small, except for shovels.
I think our Parks and Rec Director is prepared to answer that question.
Thank you, council and Councilmember Bauer. We wouldn't have necessarily a responsibility, my understanding is that we would not necessarily have a responsibility to do maintenance on it as long as we are consistent. So if we do maintenance on it in the sense of we plow it, then we do need to plow it to an ADA standard. But if we don't make the connection, my understanding is that we would not have to make that accessible. Now, part of this additional study would be to delve a little deeper into that, but based on what the initial conversations I had with folks, it sounds like that's not necessarily something we could choose to leave it unmaintained, so to speak, during the winter months.
And I did want to clarify, too, what does the city do in regard to snow removal on the existing sort of non-traditional pathway that's in...
Cotton Tail Park.
Cotton Tail Park, yeah.
We do plow that one.
Okay. And we have equipment that plows that one?
Correct, yeah.
At its width, whatever.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. Other questions for staff? And you may want to just stay handy here, just in case. Although it appears, maybe we don't have additional questions. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Johnson. With that, then, once again, the question before the city council this evening, and I should be clear about this, too, we are not being asked as an alternate to, following the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Commission, to actually vacate the right-of-way this evening, as I understand it. We don't seem to have any materials in our packet that would be prepared for that, and so we wouldn't necessarily take that action this evening if that was ultimately the direction the council did want to go. That would also have to be a subsequent action of the council, is my understanding.
Yes, the only, Mr. Mayor, the only item under consideration is what to do with the Park and Rec Commission. Based on that decision, there'll be following action, whether to pursue a contract, an RFP, or if not to do that, bring it back for a future meeting for consideration of the actual vacation based on the petition.
All right. And I was going to say, we do still have a petition before the city from the adjoining properties.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Park and Rec...
Well, we actually need to do the public comment part of this?
Before.
Yeah. So with that, we'll open it up for anyone from the public who wishes to comment. We'll go through the rules of the road here for public comment, just so everybody's familiar with them. And certainly, if you've been here before, you'll remember this or something like it. But essentially, the way it works is that everybody gets one chance to speak for this agenda item. When you're speaking, you have a three-minute time limit, which is established by city council rule, which is fairly longstanding. I will keep time and let you know if you're pushing up against or slightly over the limit and try to be generous, but at the same time gentle with my enforcement of that time limit. If you have questions, we'll make a note of those questions and then attempt to answer those questions once everybody has had a chance to comment. And then, if the questions are technical in nature, we can probably provide a reasonably good answer quickly. If they're more policy or procedural, it may be up to the council's discussion to get to an answer to that type of question. Once again, address all questions and comments to the council, not necessarily to other speakers or to staff members. This is information for the council to take under consideration as this item is being considered this evening. As I said, one opportunity to speak per speaker for this agenda item. Also, if you can begin your comments with your name, so that we know who you are, and either your address or street for the public record, whatever you're more comfortable giving as part of that public record. And if you happen to have a name that may not be something that generally people know how to spell or guess, once you're done with your comments, there's a clipboard on the table, and maybe we'll move it off to the side a little bit, but once you're done with your comments, you can just step over the clipboard and just write down your name so that we've got the spelling for the record. The other thing is, if we do have a lot of speakers this evening, there's nothing wrong with, while one person is at one of the microphones speaking, another person can be sitting at the other microphone and ready to go. And if you want to be the next person after those two, you can certainly sit in one of the seats in the front row and kind of be ready to be on deck to speak. The other thing I'll note is that, and I'm just losing my train of thought, I hate when I do this, when I'm trying to provide all the instructions here, but, no, I've lost it. So whatever it was, we'll just have to wing that part of it. But with that, oh...
And a question, could you make sure that we understand what the comments are regarding this evening? Because I think there's a breadth of what people have concerns about. So what are we asking for comment on this evening?
Thank you for clarifying that. No, that was the, I think we tried to establish that in some of the introductory information, but once again, we have before us this evening the recommendations on the screen from the Parks and Rec Commission that the city council had asked for in regard to this matter. The action requested of the council this evening is to consider those recommendations and either to take up the recommendations in the affirmative or to take some other action, which would be not the same as what's being recommended by the commission. So that's what's before us this evening. As we noted, any subsequent action, whether that be we receive a report on the requested information and take some action in that regard, or if we don't want to follow the recommendation as a council this evening, we would still have to have a second meeting, or, well, at this point, a higher number of meetings, a subsequent meeting, to take that action as well. So the action this evening that the council will be undertaking is whether to accept and follow the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Commission or not. And then, as I said, either way, there would be a subsequent meeting to handle whichever direction we go as a result of this meeting this evening. So with that, and I still haven't thought of the other items, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, and feel free to come on up and make your remarks to the council.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe and councilmembers.
I just remembered what it was. You don't have to move the microphone.
I don't have to talk?
Keep it right where it was because they'll adjust the volume in the control room.
I wish I had a cup for the water, though.
Yes.
I would appreciate if the speakers would use their microphones.
Well, they will use the microphones. All I'm saying is that you don't have to pull the microphone right up against your mouth because the control room will adjust the volume, so it's, so the audio is hearable.
I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No, I can't hear you.
Okay.
Don't always speak into their microphones.
Well, so, and I was just going to point out, these are directional microphones, and so when I'm speaking this way, it picks it up the best. When I turn this way, it doesn't pick it up as well. And some councilmembers or others aren't always as close to the microphone as they need to be or pointing their speaking at it, but we'll try to do our best to make sure that happens. I should also note that we do have hearing assist devices and technology available in the chambers, if that's something that members of the public are interested in in terms of being able to hear even better. And you can inquire with Mr. Trudgen about that if you'd like to. But with that, I haven't charged any of this time against your time, so feel free to introduce yourself and make your comments.
Tim Brown, 93 Mid Oaks Lane. I'm one of the adjacent property owners. I also happen to have a long career as a civil engineer, and so I've got some specifics on your recommendation from the parks here. First is that, no, there was no crossing estimate included in what Public Works provided early on in all this. So that crossing might be a good item to add to your study. As a civil engineer, to me, it seems like a very important issue to have that mid-buck crossing properly aligned so that it's safe for people of all ages and abilities. So that was something I would suggest adding. Also, I've pointed out, both to the council and staff, that one of my biggest concerns is the drainage out there. And anecdotally, a lot of the neighbors have said they had drainage problems, that is water in their basements, before the current storm sewer went in. And I think what the city did was an excellent job of scoping that, and they put in the storm sewer line that goes through the, right on the edge of this right-of-way at an elevation such that it acts as a drain on the surface water underground, that is, the superficial groundwater, so that it drains lower than our basements. And so, for example, there's a catch basin that's the closest to our house that's very low, and so that it's almost kind of in a hole. And I think that was done deliberately to bring that frac surface or that top of the groundwater down below the basements. I mentioned that to staff, and the response in the report was that they would just add another drainage pipe if need be, but it's not a quantity, it's not a discharge issue, which another pipe would solve if the pipe was too small. But it's the elevation of the three structures that are along this right-of-way. If you grade it in such a way that you've got to raise these, and you can do that by just adding a ring, and now all of a sudden, this pipe with a grate on top has a higher elevation, or you could lower it, that affects the level of the superficial groundwater in the area. So to me, this is a very important issue, especially as an adjacent property owner. I would hate to have to deal with water in my basement. My basement had water problems at one point in time, and it was built in 1957, and I think that was before the pipe went in there in the late '60s or so. And so, what I see in my basement is literally the floor heaved up and has a crack, a big crack down the middle where water pressure pushes that concrete up, and maybe you've seen or heard of that before. But I think that is an important aspect of this report that you're going to do as well. I think some study of that issue would be very important here, especially with regard to whatever grading comes out of such a report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right at three minutes, by the way.
Setting a good record.
Everyone, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Rachel Brown, not related to Tim Brown, but 1705 Rose Lawn...
but 1705 Rose Lawn Avenue West, right adjacent to the right-of-way. There are times when something that starts as a simple issue can spin out of control. One thing leads to another, and another, and another. And then, even with the best of intentions and really good creative work, that small issue becomes unnecessarily complex. And in those situations, the best thing to do is for someone to say stop, for someone to say no. That is where we are with this issue. I ask you to say no, no to this. I ask you to say stop. No further study of a possible trail, no more money, no more staff time, no more precious volunteer time from you, the council members, or the Park and Rec Commissioners. There are many reasons why to stop, and you know them already. If you care about trees in and along that 30-foot stretch of land, you know the question is not if trees will be killed and damaged, but how many? If you care about making trails accessible for people with mobility issues, you know, and you just heard, the park trail will not be accessible when there's snow and ice, given the no-plow plan that is needed to try and protect those trees. If you care about keeping the right-of-way character, you know that six-and-a-half-foot-high fences that sadly my husband and I and our neighbors will put up to maintain any privacy will change the feel of that tiny urban woodland forever. If you care about and have studied park access for people in Mid Oaks, you know that the Falcon Heights Community Park is less than a mile away and is a wonderful resource used by all of us, or many of us. If you care about equity and inclusion, and you have studied the, and you know the data about Roseville households and park access, you know there are neighborhoods that are far more needy than ours. If you care about city staff, you know they're busy with important tasks for projects you have already prioritized and budgeted for carefully. And if you care about fiscal responsibility, you know this is not a project for which any more city time or money should be spent. So please say stop, please say no. And go back to the original, simple issue. There's a very, very small patch of land that the city long ago claimed for a possible road that now should simply be passed back to the underlying property owners. So say yes to putting this issue to rest. And at your next meeting, say no to the vacation process, or say yes to the vacation, excuse me. Oh, spun that around.
Stunner.
Yeah. No, but seriously, that the next meeting, please bring it to the, bring the vacation back. It's been since April. It's, we're in our third season, approaching our fourth dealing with. So please, put this to rest. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other members of the public wish to speak to this item this evening? Hello and welcome.
Hi.
Please leave me.
My name is Oscar Anderson, and I live at 90 Mid Oaks Lane.
Welcome.
So I'm in sixth grade, and I go to Brimhall Elementary, which is, which I think is like a bit north of my house. So basically, the path that is in this subject leads to a road, which then leads to my school. And last year, I used to use it, or last year, I used it all the time to walk to my house and to the school. And, well, yeah, to my mom.
That was great. Take it away, Mom.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Anne Lottie, live at the same address as my very brave son here. I don't have anything prepared tonight. I just, I guess I would ask you to consider voting yes tonight to look into the option of creating a non-traditional path so that our kids can use it again. And not just my kids, in a few years, they're going to be in middle school and off and away. And I'm really thinking of all the kids in the decades to come. This path has been in use for a long, long, long time. And we've missed it since it's closed down. And so we appreciate people's love of the trees. We, of course, love them as well. And think it's really important to make sure that they are as protected as possible. We do have trees, unfortunately, falling down all over our neighborhood because of drought and climate change and disease. And so my hope is that this non-traditional path would be just a very minor stress on the trees. And anyway, that's it.
I have, like, one more thing to add. We have a few neighborhood kids in our neighborhood, and about two more to come, actually. Well, yeah. So basically, they are going to Brimhall, too. And they haven't used that path yet. There's a kindergartner there who just started school this year at Brimhall. And he hasn't used the path yet since it's closed down. Last year, I was like, oh, my gosh, I'm so happy. I'm going to walk the path with my, with my, the neighborhood kids and, you know. And it's an important part of getting to school and stuff, like, yeah, in friends' houses.
Thank you.
All right.
And it's completely accessible. Last year, I've ridden my bike and my scooter down it before.
There we go. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Hello, welcome.
I can't follow Oscar.
That's amazing.
Hi, I'm Donald Gall. Good to see you all again. I'm going to read this because I want to kind of keep track of what I wanted to say tonight. "I request the mayor and city council to please accept the recommendations of the Park and Recreation Commission, acknowledging that the Aldine Street right-of-way has value to the Parks and Recreation system, and to engage a consultant to study the feasibility of a non-traditional pathway through the right-of-way, including pathway alignment options and specific tree impacts." That's right out of the report. "I thank you for recognizing that the Aldine Street right-of-way is more complicated than the usual vacation requests brought for city action, and therefore for directing the Parks and Rec Department and Commission to more deeply study the issue. I also thank and acknowledge the remarkable work of Parks and Recreation staff and commission members to fully explore and understand what the Aldine right-of-way means to all affected parties, and then, I believe, to reflect all parties' wishes and interests as best possible in their recommendations to the mayor and city council. At the end of the July 21 city council meeting, I spoke with city council member Schroeder, who urged me and all of us to get together to seek solutions as neighbors. Based on her suggestion, I reached out and met with one of the families along the right-of-way and have made a point to greet and chat with neighbors whose houses adjoin the path, both at subsequent city council meetings and during walks on neighborhood streets. I believe there are a number of things that we are all in agreement on, including that we all wish to protect the trees and other elements of the Aldine right-of-way path, and that the experience regarding this issue over these past months has been challenging for all of us, including city leaders and staff, all of you. To be clear, I am strongly in favor of maintaining some form of a path along the right-of-way in which my experience has served as our local mini reservoir woods. I have heard and read comments that the right-of-way is merely a shortcut, and will say that I think there is some truth to that. However, being a shortcut does not, to my mind, reduce the value of the space and may, in fact, highlight its utility and value as part of our recreation system. As an older person, one year short of 70, whose primary form of recreation and exercise is walking, I greatly value the option to take a shorter, and to my experience, rejuvenating stroll in the woods on my daily walks. I ask all of us to take a deep breath and await the findings of the recommended feasibility study of the Aldine Street right-of-way. Should the findings show that it is not possible to both protect trees and create a simple and safe path for future walkers with minimal impact on surrounding properties, I believe we would all agree to take no further action. If, however, there's a path found that will protect trees and minimize encroachment on the properties along the right-of-way, I sincerely hope we will all choose to come together again as neighbors in support of the plan and welcome one another back to this path that has meant so much to so many. Thank you all very much, and thank you for your work on this. I know this is hard."
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening?
I'm Sarah Quinn, and I live on Mid Oaks, one of the adjacent properties. I really want to thank you guys who are paying attention here. I really appreciate that. I know everybody's time is valuable. The path that the city has been exploring building is not a citywide amenity. It is not a destination that people will drive to. It is not a park to play in. It is not a wandering trail to hike. It is a shortcut, a shortcut that all city taxpayers will pay for, but a very small number of Roseville residents will use. A majority of the tree canopies in the row expand the entire 30-foot width of it. If you do proper construction drip line protection, you can't put a path in. Anne spoke to us losing trees in our neighborhood. Since 2021, we've lost 13 trees, just on that Mid Oaks Lane and Mid Oaks Road. That's a lot of trees to lose. So I'm here asking you to stop spending valuable taxpayer money, dollars on a niche shortcut that will serve less than 1% of Roseville. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
All right. Very good.
I came to listen tonight. My name is Karen Schaefer. I live at 2100 Fairview Avenue, right adjacent to Brimhall School and Evergreen Park. So I'm real familiar with this area because, hello, I'm a senior citizen and I walk in the neighborhood. But my intention had been to come here just to listen to the debate because I know it's been ongoing and ongoing. And I have only one kind of different perspective. This is coming to you through the Park and Recreation Department, all right? That's one silo of city government. My, the way I approached this issue was through the Public Works. I had the distinct honor of serving on the original Pathways Commission that the city established in, I don't know, 1982, you know, back in the day, before we had the award-winning pathways system that we have today. And living on Fairview Avenue, I see this every day. The dog walkers, the baby carriages, the cyclists, the boarders, the walkers. The system that we have in place in Roseville today that we started working on in the 80s is a jewel for a, for a city that is so impacted by county and state roads. We have great accessibility for everyone, but they are all destination-oriented. The whole purpose of the system is to enable people to get from here to there safely. This pathway that you're talking about in the, our neighborhood has nothing to do with that. And our parkways, our park system is not the pathway system. So it's kind of an odd mix of path and park, in my addled view. You know, I'm not particularly in favor of spending more money on it. What's a shortcut? It's not even a very handy shortcut. And there are many neighborhoods where there'd be great shortcuts. I just think there's excessive attention paid to a very tiny thing when we already have, in our city, an award-winning, robust pathway system to serve all of our residents. And I would lean toward not worrying about an old right-of-way. And the city attorney, she knows well, this sort of thing happens all the time. These little parcels, like, oh, my gosh, the city still owns this? Oh, hello. And instead, just put it away and encourage people to use the excellent system that we have, and under the leadership of the city council, over the past decades. So, thanks so much. And next time, I'll take advantage of, if you've got the system, I'll do better. I didn't know you had one. I know the Guthrie Theater has it, but, thank you.
Ours may not be up to Guthrie Theater standards, but hopefully it will be adequate if needed.
Thanks.
Thanks for your comments this evening. Hello and welcome.
Hi, my name's Cindy Gallagher, and I live at 2009 Herschel. And I've shared before. And I didn't write something. I thought I would, but I thought I'd wait and see if I was even going to say anything. But I feel like I just can't, I just can't leave here without just talking about future generations and how we're talking about a very short period of time right now. And the homeowners that live adjacent to the property or the land, because it's really land, it's not property right now, that we're talking about, will eventually move, or we all end up dying at some point, and somebody else lives there. But when a corridor is president, present, it's present for many generations. And we don't always know the history, but it has a long impact. And I, one of my neighbors is an amazing map drawer. And she drew this incredible map, she's here tonight, of the migration of the Dakota Indians from Bade Makasa up to White Bear Lake and all of the paths that they used to travel that were taken away from them as land became property. And I feel like this is similar in a very, very small way where there's this point in time where we want to make a difference that will affect future generations. And when I started out, I was thinking about myself. And it's like my own usage of this for the last 35 years. But really, it's not about me, it's about the future. And we have the opportunity to keep a door open or close it forever. So I really vote, I really hope you consider approving motion two, motion one, motion two, and consider a way to put it in as a non-traditional path. Nobody wants an asphalt path with retaining walls and things like that. Just a simple path that is kind of similar to what's at Gibbs Farm. One of the neighbors is a wheelchair person who said, you don't need an asphalt path. You don't need a concrete path. Something like what's at Gibbs is good. So that's all I wanted to share, is to keep the corridor open and don't close the door forever. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Hello and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dan Gallagher. I also live at 2009 Herschel Street. I did not coordinate with my wife. I hadn't planned to speak.
You match pretty well, though.
Yes, indeed. I'm prompted to speak to express my mystification at some of the comments other speakers have made. One of the comments was that less than 1% of the citizens of Roseville would use this path, so that in some way is supposed to make this less worthy. And I think that is not a particularly compelling argument. You have seen the petition, you know that there are large numbers of people in this neighborhood that do wish, that do use the path and wish to continue using a path there. So I don't think that should be a consideration. That just doesn't make any sense. It's also been suggested that because it's only a shortcut, that that makes it of less value. Well, there are two, quote, shortcuts between my house and Brimhall Elementary School. They don't take you anywhere except to another. They don't take you anywhere except to another street, but I haven't heard any criticism of having those shortcuts there, so I don't know why that would come into play. Third, they seem to think that it's just not important, but having walked that path dozens, not dozens, many hundreds of times, just to get out of, off the streets, the business, away from the traffic, for me and all of my colleagues that walk this has great value. We can get away from the traffic, we can get away from the noise, we can be in a place where you can actually hear birds sing. So again, that's, to me, in and of itself, is a powerful argument to actually maintain that. So I would therefore, for those reasons and other reasons, urge the commission to approve both motion one and two. We're not talking about a lot of money here. I don't know why they keep raising the issue of cost. It's a rounding error in terms of the budget of Roseville, and so we need to do this. We need to go forth and have this study done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Hello and welcome.
Hello. My name is Steph Ashenbrenner, or Stephanie Keen Ashenbrenner, and I live at 2016 Herschel. When I think back to where we were in, I think it was April when this first came up, the amount that we've learned about the path and about our neighbors and the entire approach has, we've learned a lot. And we are at this point where we're arguing, you know, do we go further down this path and learn some more things? We're not, we're not talking about a decision to vacate or not yet. We're just, let's learn some more right now by having this feasibility study. And, you know, this is, this is a public good that we're talking about. And I know that being fiscally conservative is really important, especially, you know, when, when times get tight. And with that said, I think that it's important to balance what, what a public good is versus what, how much a feasibility study costs. And let's keep working on this and seeing if we can't find a solution that is amenable to everybody. I remember walking that path many times, and if the adjacent property owners even knew we were there, they were friendly, I think that benefit to them to have more land needs to be considered, that, you know, they're gaining something when the entire rest of the neighborhood loses something. And I think that, you know, before a decision is made, let's just know all the facts. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Remember, you can queue up in the seats in the front row if you want.
Good evening. My name is Claire, Claire Talon Ruin. I live at 20 Mid Oaks Lane. I'd ask you to please consider the feasibility study, say yes to that. Community is nourished by shared time and space, a throughway in a neighborhood without sidewalks. That neighbors use peacefully is symbolic of community. The Aldine path is an important social feature of this neighborhood. Please consider the lasting impacts of its existence on generations who will live here when we have all moved on. I hope you will choose to maintain the path for the calm that will return, perhaps not with we who compromise the current set of neighbors, alas, but for all future Roseville residents who deserve this simple pathway. Deciding to vacate will make this permanent. Establishing a path assumes the best in us, that we can get along and that space, particularly public, can be shared. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
My name's Daniel Ruin. My spouse Claire and I live at 20 Mid Oaks Lane. First, I express my support for recommendations from the Park and Recreation Commission to conduct a feasibility study for a walking path through the Aldine right-of-way. I believe the recommendations are reasonable, requests from the City Council for direction, and more information were carefully considered. I thank the commission for their intentional work. Second, as I and others have already raised at previous meetings, what concerns me more than points for and against a path or a right-of-way vacation are the broken relationships in our community. So I address my comments to you, the City Council, to my neighbors on and around Mid Oaks Lane, and especially to those neighbors along the right-of-way in a spirit of constructive hope. I make the following appeal, not because I think we can change one another's minds on this specific issue, but because of the potential for a longer game if we summon the will to play it. We need trusting neighbor-to-neighbor relationships in trying times such as these. We will require that trust for the months and years ahead to address even greater challenges together. Since the city is perhaps not equipped to facilitate a more formal mediation process, I see no other option than to take this civic responsibility upon ourselves. And so to this point, I and another concerned resident, both of us in favor of a public path along the right-of-way and hoping for some sort of compromise, engaged in private conversations with two of our neighbors along the right-of-way this summer, and I continue to keep my follow-up invitation open for active listening, discussion, and possible solutions. I've served as a leader and participant in Braver Angels workshops for the past several years. Braver Angels brings together American citizens across the political divide. And these sessions, they don't try to change anybody's minds. They feature nonjudgmental active listening exercises, and they result in citizens creating a covenant of agreement on shared values of communication and civil discourse. I continue to believe that we're all people of goodwill, and if not always that, then at least the people who recognize shared self-interest in maintaining bonds of communal cooperation and mutual protection. So if any of our neighbors along the Aldine right-of-way are interested in such a process, I would welcome that participation. I will work with you to design an equitable and constructive atmosphere, to have your feelings shared and respected. And you would, of course, also be asked to do the same with neighbors who don't agree with you on this issue. Perhaps with the input of even one or two neighbors on each side of the disagreement, we might bring more people together to strengthen our relationships and pave the way for future resilience and cooperation. And of course, if there are any resources the city can provide, like mediation or space for us to meet or support, we would welcome that. There have been so many statistics and graphs and appeals, testimonies and emails and handouts to save the trees from both sides of this issue. Well, as far as I know, trees mostly cooperate. They make space for one another. They share scarce resources and alert one another to dangers in the soil. What we have right now is like a bad case of buckthorn in our emotional system. What we have is an overemphasis on competing for sunlight out of fear and anger. So I think it would honor these trees if we modeled the way our environment finds equilibrium and sustains itself for the long haul. I can be reached at 20 Mid Oaks Lane. I've got a Braver Angels sign in my yard. Stop by sometime or feel free to leave a note with your contact information. Thank you, City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hello and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Frank Strawn. I live on Shire Avenue, and yes, I'm the spouse of Councilmember Julie Strawn. I've been hesitant to speak on this issue since the very beginning because of accusations that were made and eventually dismissed because my wife was honest and open about how she thinks and things that she does. She did nothing unethical, but she was accused. This pathway, this right-of-way, it's not a pathway yet, I encourage you to move forward with the park recommendations and work deliberately on finding a good solution. I think we, I think there shouldn't end up being a pathway there, even if it is just a shortcut. 400 feet from the end of that pathway is another shortcut that goes off to the east. I don't remember the street, there's a street between Snelling Avenue and Aldine.
Ridgewood.
Ridgewood, thank you. There's a shortcut through there. And why, I don't understand the problem with it being a shortcut. If it's a nice relaxing shortcut through the trees, all the better. And just a sad note about the trees. And I love the trees. I studied forestry at the University of Minnesota back in the 1980s. But I do know that if something were to happen with that underground utilities, if a pipe were to collapse, the Public Works would move in and they would cut down every tree in their way, they wouldn't come here and ask you if they could. They would go and fix it. It's a sad reality of a tree in our city, in any city, really. I don't think we should hope for that. I like the trees. I also like using that pathway or that right-of-way, which I haven't used for quite a while now. I urge you to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Here we are again. Appreciate the time that you've given to this and the consideration, you, the council, Mayor Rowe. I also want to give a thanks to the Parks and Rec Recreation Commission for their weighing in and taking the situation seriously as well. I want to respectfully encourage you.
Can you take just a moment to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. My name is Joe Prible. I live at 1738 Skillman Avenue West in Roseville. I want to encourage you to acknowledge and honor the Parks and Recreation Commission's conclusion that the Aldine right-of-way holds value for the city's parks and recreation system and to go ahead with the study that they are recommending. This study might also need to include a topographical survey that indicates grades and slopes along that right-of-way as well, so that considerations about drainage and best pathway alignments can be measured as well. And it appears worthwhile to emphasize that support for the Parks and Rec Commission's involvement in this matter not be narrowly viewed as an attempt by residents to convert the right-of-way to a city formal, formal city park, but that it reflects recognition that the Aldine right-of-way possesses recreational and ecological value consistent with the commission's mission. Their expertise could help the city design a path, whether or not the right-of-way is to be designated as a formal park. The ballot, that balances environmental sensitivity, accessibility, and neighbor privacy in ways that extend beyond the scope of what Public Works is structured to provide. Moreover, while considerable attention has been devoted to understanding protecting the health of the trees, and it has been said that most, well, everybody agrees about the value of those trees and maintaining them, what remains unknown is the current health of those trees and how a path might feasibly be aligned in a way that sufficiently ensures the trees' ongoing vitality. A third-party study in particular, as recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission, seems a crucial and meaningful way to address those questions. Some residents have concerns, understandably, about the cost of commissioning the recommended study and the time that's given to all that we've already done and ask why we should do more. And I do agree that the fiscal responsibility that we have is always important, and relatively modest expenditure required to undertake the Parks and Rec Commission's recommendation represents a reasonable and prudent investment when weighed against the potential permanent loss of public land. If vacated, the right-of-way and the opportunities it represents for recreation, access, and community benefit cannot be easily reclaimed. And here we might need to be mindful again of the future of the community and how it may develop and how this right-of-way can factor into that picture of the future. All of the attention dedicated to this particular right-of-way simply underscores its unique nature and the necessity of a unique resolution. Arguments that the Aldine right-of-way should be vacated does not, or because it does not mirror other rights of way elsewhere in the city, or because it scores not at all on the city's master pathway plan, do not adequately account for its distinctive history, evident community use for very practical purposes, or the lingering uncertainties surrounding the environmental accessibility factors at play, nor does it seem to align with the Parks and Rec Commission's findings, that it does have meaning for them as they view it in the Parks and Rec system. So in short, the Aldine right-of-way is not a redundant corridor, an inconsequential shortcut with no practical purpose. It's a cherished and well-used public space, as the months-long discussion on the matter has demonstrated and goes on, whose final disposition deserves the care, transparency, and factual information that a comprehensive, expert study and further deliberation can provide. So I would again urge you to accept the Parks and Rec Commission's recommendation to ensure that the study moves forward properly so that the eventual decision reflects both the city's commitment to stewardship and the public's enduring trust in the process. And once again, I do thank you for all the time and careful consideration that you give to this, and I thank all the neighbors for their participation as well. Everybody deserves to be heard, and I appreciate that everybody's getting that chance. Now we also need to listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right. We'll close the opportunity for public comment at this time and thank everyone for their input into this process, not only this evening, but as has been noted, we've had a number of previous discussions at the council level and two Parks and Recreation Commission meetings prior to this. I don't know that there were questions raised that are necessarily such that perhaps technical answers may be provided by staff. I would just note, from the point of view, I think one of the early commenters, you know, talked about stormwater runoff and drainage, and certainly in these days of water management areas and stormwater regulations, that certainly we could not undertake a project, any project in the city, without serious consideration of stormwater management and maintaining a proper runoff and not creating problems. I do note that on the topographical information that was provided as part of the packet, there does appear sort of in the middle, between Rose Lawn and the streets to the north, there does appear to be, you know, a low spot. And so it is interesting that the drainage doesn't go out towards the streets, but rather there is that, that low spot in the middle, which is probably something to do with how the stormwater system was designed and installed in the first place. And so certainly, all of that would have to be taken into account, so hopefully that helps answer that question, at least partially from a process point of view. Council, were there other questions you noted that should be addressed as a follow-up to the comments? I, like I said, I hadn't gotten other ones, other than perhaps ones that we can address in our deliberation as a council. If not, were there any follow-up questions from councilmembers for staff at this time? Councilmember Graff?
I do have one for staff regarding trees and our tree policy in, in Roseville. I don't, I guess that would probably be Director Johnson.
It may have to be Director Johnson.
I'd rather ask the question inside rather than.
Thanks for being daring.
What is the policy with trees in our parks as far as protection and conservation of trees?
That's a big question. I think typically, we do everything that we can to try to preserve trees, including when we do any construction project, we place key analysis on an effort to preserve trees. That doesn't mean that always wins out. One prominent example is at the Central Park Victoria Playground there, when we did that inclusive playground, there was a tree that had to be moved. There was an attempt to stabilize it, and we weren't able to save it. We knew that risk going into it. But by and large, I think more so than just about any other Parks and Recreation Department, we make every effort possible to preserve, even to add additional resources to try to save trees that are struggling through root stabilizers and things like that.
So if we have a diseased tree, that would be something that would probably be scheduled for removal or a tree that was not safe?
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, examples are ash trees right now, but yes, disease hazard trees, they are removed, but our first track is always to try to save them. So we will typically try to see, can we invest in, and it all depends on significance and all of that, but to try to invest in preserving the tree first. But if it can't be saved, we do remove it, yes, before it becomes a hazard.
And then generally, we remove, try to remove invasive species if we can, is that correct?
Correct, absolutely.
Thank you. Oh, one more question, and I don't know if this will be to you. If it is private property, do we have any say on how they handle their trees or whether we can stop them from removing their trees on private property?
My understanding is not. That's outside of my purview, but we did ask that question and bring it back to the commission. The answer I was provided is no.
That was what I thought I read in the report. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I could probably clarify that just a little bit. We do have a tree preservation policy as it relates to development in the city, and that's triggered by things like building permits and/or, you know, larger development projects. projects. However, if a property owner is not making a change to their property, that, that policy does not necessarily affect them. Like I said, it's only triggered if somebody is perhaps proposing an addition to their home or some other change on their property that requires us to analyze the trees that might be impacted and how that might be addressed on the property. But otherwise, with, absent that, there isn't necessarily, as was noted, anything that, that the city has to regulate the, the ownership and maintenance of trees on private property. Other questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We have the request before us of, or the recommendation before us from the Parks and Recreation Commission as outlined, and once again, I believe it's on the screen for people's reference. Is there a motion from the council as it relates to this recommendation?
I have a clarifying, or a question about clarification?
Sure.
When we talk about the feasibility study, what are we looking at for feasibility? I mean, we do have enough with, if we're tucking a four-foot wide path, and given this right-of-way, there is enough room for that, right? We could remove enough trees to put together such a pathway. If, if we go ahead with this motion, I'd like us to actually have a discussion about what we are looking at for feasibility. Otherwise, this is just going to go to staff and they're not going to, you know, have to hand this out to some consultant to put together. I think it'd be good for us to note what we're actually looking for in this feasibility, and also to make sure that the data's there, or whatever it is that we're looking for, so a decision can be made, since this has been going on since April, rather than just saying, "We're looking," because it is feasible to put a four-foot wide, non-heartscape trail through there. There's enough space. I think what we're talking about, if I had to guess, what we're talking about feasibility, if I had to guess, is the cost necessary for this to happen. You know, do we need a retaining wall? How much earth has the number of trees, you know, minimum amount of trees? How much cover that's going to be lost or gained? I just want to make sure that if this happens, that we have the information there to finally make a decision on this.
I think certainly all those things you've mentioned would be expected to be part of such an analysis. You know, I think that perhaps somewhat implicit in pathway alignment options is dealing with grade and the ability to meet accessibility requirements in the grade that's there and what's, what changes might be needed to be made, but certainly we can be more explicit about that in our discussion this evening. I think tree impacts, once again, I, you know, we, we need to understand whether the construction impacts the trees, as well as the long-term presence of a pathway and the impact on the trees. Seems to me, and I'd open it up if other council members have insight into what, what the expectation is. Or Councilmember Bauer, if you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, from hearing from conversations and what we've talked about, it does seem that it's mostly trees that we're talking about, as, if I had to guess. And for the base, I mean, I'd be curious to know what other council members have for, what they need to know in order to make a decision to vacate or not going forward. If it's mostly the trees, or if it's mostly, you know, the cost, which I don't believe that's the case, or just to make sure that it's in there. Because, because if it is, some of those things aren't there, there may not be a need to do the feasibility studies, is what I'm getting at. We may just be kicking the can down the road.
I think that in reality, unless you are a, or any of us are able to understand the potential need for grading to achieve accessibility, I'm not prepared to say that I know the answer to that at this point. You know, it could be that the site is very, you know, capable of, of handling that. It could be that the site requires significant change to grade. That certainly adds up to cost and may be a factor. I would certainly want to have a better understanding of that. Stormwater issues were brought up. I think that's important to have at least some understanding of what might be needed for mitigation of stormwater. I think it was also noted that we did have some conversation about, you know, the potential for a crossing at Rose Lawn, to the extent that we can have some sort of estimate, and it could even be just a staff estimate, because I think we've got some expertise in that area, as to the potential cost of, of a sort of, of crossing. That might be something to, to look at as well. And once again, I don't know if there's other things that council members have. Councilmember Strawn?
I think it's also important to know what we're dealing with at the north and south ends of that property, in the properties that are currently inside of those fences. We have, we don't have really a good idea of the items that are fenced already on people's properties, what that looks like for, I, I think until, you know, we had someone with an expertise that I do not have going in and seeing what we're looking at inside that area, I feel like a third party is really our best bet in order to, and someone that, you know, would be able to look at it holistically from, from end to end, and kind of what that would require from the existing people who have, you know, over time encroached a little or a lot onto that space, knowing whether, you know, what we, what we're fully looking at, because we can't make an assessment standing on the outside of a fence that surrounds the area.
I guess the only thing I would note to that, and I don't disagree with it, but we do have some fairly good indication of tree locations and species in the tree survey that we've already got, and then also pretty good indication of topography in both of those fenced areas, to the extent that that could be gleaned apparently in the process that was used to provide the information in the packet, but I do understand the point that you're making.
I think the path alignment one is the one I would like to know what the options are. There's some details here that I don't feel I know enough about yet, that I would like the staff to advise us on. I don't feel like I'm equipped right now, I should speak into this for Ms. Shaver. I don't feel like I'm equipped with the information we have right now to make that decision on exactly what we need to do. I would like some feedback on that from the staff.
And if we do this, I would note that it may, in here, we have a, just says consultant, but I would note that we, for what we're talking about, it may be two consultants. I'm thinking one that's much more arborist-focused and one that's much more of like pathway construction. I don't believe one will be able to handle that.
And I think that was talked about in the, in the Parks and Rec discussion as well. So we have the, the request and recommendation before us. Once again, is there an action that the council would like to take this evening?
And make a motion to accept the Park and Rec Commission discussion and recommendations, and move forward with the study to determine the feasibility of this path.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been, and I'm presuming that that's inclusive of the conversation we just had in terms of what we're looking for?
I believe so, yes.
All right, just to be clear on the motion. So that's been moved by Councilmember Strawn and seconded by Councilmember Groff. Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
Nothing further.
All right, and as the seconder, Councilmember Groff?
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming again. This has been a long process, but government does not move quickly, and there's a reason for that. Once something's done, and if you see in a year it was a mistake, there's no going back. So I want to be very deliberate about this decision. I know it's frustrating, but another month or two is not the end of the world in the big picture of the world. So that's why we're moving at this pace. I want all the information before I make a decision. I want to make the best decision for everyone, not just the people adjoining the property. You have particular rights, absolutely, but I also want to make it for the young man who walks to school, or the other people who use this as a pathway to rejuvenate. We don't have anything in this corridor that is much for parkland. Most of the parks in Roseville are on the east side of Lexington Avenue. I live on this side. Many of our lots are larger, which is nice, but some of them are not. And, and continuous paths are important. They're a way to get around without using cars all the time, so that's why I'm seconding this motion.
All right, other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I do feel that if this study goes forward, that this will provide us finally with the last piece of data, last bits and items that we need to make a decision. I can't imagine what would be necessary beyond this going forward. So again, I thank everyone for your patience in doing this, and I agree with Councilmember Groff that once we decide something, it's decided. So taking a little bit more time to make sure that we check everything is a good idea. And spending a little bit more to make this happen, but I do feel that this will be the study that is necessary to, for us to make a final decision. I do hope that we're able to schedule these consultants and get this answer before snowfalls.
All right. And I would just note that, and in agreement with much of what has been said this evening, I, you know, I did take the time to kind of pour over the information in the packet on the topographical study that was done, as well as the tree inventory, and with some question marks, I was able to sketch in an idea of, of a pathway that could be run through the site. So that gave me some confidence that there is a possibility, but once again, I think there's a limit, as we've all kind of noted, and certainly I emphasize to, to my expertise and my ability to judge some of the factors. You know, I note that some of the tree species are less desirable tree species, you know, sometimes, and smaller, smaller examples or smaller specimens of some of those species. And certainly our effort isn't necessarily to get rid of less desirable species, especially when they are significant and impactful to the community around them, but at the same time, certainly those, those, you know, smaller specimens can be, for lack of a better word, you know, more expendable when making considerations about these types of projects. We do have some green ash in this corridor, and certainly it so happens that at least in, in my preliminary kind of sketch, the, the potential is that a removal might be a green ash, or a couple of removals might be ash, one or two might be small box elders, and then, you know, and then I note there are some arborvitae's at the north end, that where there is a fairly significant topographical change, which may require some grading associated with accessibility from the north end, and, you know, so it may be that those arborvitae's have to, have to not be there anymore to make that happen, too. Not up to me to figure out, that's why we have folks that have expertise in these areas. But these are the kind of questions that came up as I was taking a look at it, that made me think that it makes a lot of sense to, to have this, this check done before we do this action. I think it's been very ably said by residents this evening that, you know, once the, once the right-of-way is vacated, it is extremely difficult and expensive for cities to get property back. Basically, it would have to be, you know, bought at the market value at that point. And, and so while we have this opportunity to potentially maintain the property, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing the right diligence to, to check out the process. And that actually includes consulting with our attorney early on in one of, after one of our early discussions about even the feasibility of, you know, using this right-of-way, and, and especially as we were referring it to Parks and Rec, which I'll get to in a moment. And we got that advice, we have that, and, and so that's part of the picture. It helps us look at this, and certainly we do have to have that nexus to transportation, as, as was noted in that advice. As, as to the involvement of Parks and Rec, and I was one of the people that, you know, promoted that at, at that stage of the process, is because Parks and Rec system has a very good process for, and, and not to say Public Works doesn't, but has a very good process of engaging people in the community in discussion about planning around parks, about impacts, about trying to bring people together around solutions. That is very unique, I think, in the Parks and Recreation System, and also serves this particular decision that we're trying to make very well, and I think would help serve a process going forward if ultimately we decide to do a non-traditional pathway. And so that was a part of my reasoning for involvement of Parks and Rec. Just as a reminder for folks, this originally came to the council as a matter that was initiated by the Public Works Department, who is responsible for our rights-of-way and has been in a process for several years of actually looking closely at the rights-of-way that the city has and that may not need anymore, and making sure that those are reverted back to adjacent property owners, because ultimately, government should only have property for the purpose it was intended for, and if the government does not any longer need that purpose, then rightfully, the property should be returned to adjacent property owners, and that is, that is a policy and a procedure that this city, as well as other communities across the state, take very seriously. And so it just so happened that as a part of that process, we began to hear about individuals in the neighborhood that use this, or had been using that right-of-way as an informal pathway, that I think gave the council some pause in just immediately going through the process of vacating the right-of-way and, and wanting to think about this some more. And as has been discussed this evening, that's how we got to this, this evening's discussion. And I think, I do agree that, that getting this additional information should hopefully provide the council and the public with what we need to make some sort of final decision on this at our next discussion, and I would concur with both the recommendation and the comments of the council this evening, that we should take that action as soon as we know the information as possible. With that, we have the motion before us to undertake the study as outlined, both in the recommendation as well as, as fleshed out in our discussion this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, four to zero, and that study is authorized then. And I believe, Mr. Trudgen, is there anything else staff needs from the council by way of direction on this matter?
No, I think the conversation was good about the scope and everything. That's aligned with what we were thinking, but it was good to, to hear that from the council. So we'll get going right away here and get the, some proposals going and get the work started as soon as we can.
All right, and just a procedural question. If the, the costs involved are below the threshold, which the city manager has authority to spend, would that necessarily even come back before the city council for authorization to spend, since we've provided this direction this evening?
That's correct, Mayor. We weren't intending to do that. If the costs were more than $10,000, we would bring it forward for council discussion and approval.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Once again, everyone, why don't we just take about a five-minute break here of, because I, unfortunately, I don't know that everybody's here to stay for the rest of the meeting.
You should. You should stay.
We're talking, we promise to be very interesting.
We're talking about taxes.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break. All right, we're back from a short break, and stunned that nobody that was here for the previous item stuck around for the rest of the meeting, but will try somehow to get by. I promised to be interesting, and it wasn't enough. I didn't promise that.
No.
All right. Next on our agenda is Item 7C, which is to consider 2026 levy options, and this is specific to our prior discussion as it relates to having received both of the grants that the city was seeking for funding of public safety staffing going forward, and having also, as a council, provided some guidance to staff about the starting time of the hiring for the firefighters. And with that, I'll turn it over to City Manager Trudgen to present these options to the council for our consideration, and just noting, and I'm sure he'll mention this as well, that I don't think any request is made to make a decision by the council this evening. Perhaps if we have questions or need more follow-up, this is our opportunity to get that as we go into our final budget and tax levy discussions at subsequent meetings. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, yeah, we do want to talk a little bit about the various levy options based on the receiving of grants for firefighters and the police department, and the look at an early start date. So, as you mentioned, this is mostly informational, certainly, any direction you can give us would be appreciated. I do understand that several of the scenarios involve franchise fees, which we have not made a decision at this point. Just as a side note for that, I'm working hard to get some possible ordinances and the fee ordinance in front of the council for initial discussion, November 10th. Then we have an additional meeting, but fingers crossed, we're still working on that, because that is pretty relevant to the overall final decision you'll need to make here. So, I did want to walk through some scenarios and provide some information. As you mentioned, we did receive the $3.9 million SAFER grant and $500,000 for the COPS grant. That does offset some potential levy. The real question became when we would start those firefighters. As you recall, we originally, in the part of the budget proposal, said September 1st. Given the way the federal grant guidelines work, the grant period starts April 11th or so, about that date. So, if we held to the September 1st date, we would lose, you know, roughly six months or so of opportunity to use those dollars and put them in place. I think you also heard from the fire chief that there's several other agencies that did get SAFER grants, and the competition for firefighters might be pretty big, so we want to make sure we can be as competitive as possible. But having that discussion, didn't really understand what that impact would be if we had an early start date, so that's why we're here tonight. So, the tables I'm showing are in the council packet, but I just thought I'd display them. I also gave you paper copies, this for you to follow along here. So, ended up coming up with three different scenarios and an A and B option for each of them. So, Scenario 1 uses both the SAFER grant and COPS grant, COPS grant funds to offset the levy impact, does not include any franchise fees to offset levy impact, and also does not have any additional capital spending. So, pretty basic budget. It's really the base budget and adding the firefighters and police department positions. So, if we were to start Scenario 1A, start date of 9-1, we're looking at about 10.84% levy increase. I should mention that this is a blended rate of both the city levy and the EDA levy, so it's combined. You did set a not-to-exceed levy of 12%, and that's the city levy. That was increased by that much preliminarily. When you offset the EDA levy, which was lowered by $100,000, it's actually 11.53% as a blended rate. So, Scenario 1 with a start date of 9-1 is 10.84%. And then, Scenario 1B starts April 15th. We chose April 15th for a couple of reasons. It's halfway through the month, but it's also the start of our P period during that time, so it aligns very well with that, so, and it's kind of a good benchmark. So, Scenario 1B, once again, receiving the grants, but no franchise fees or additional capital spending, is 11.54%. Remember, the blended rate before is 11.53%. It's about $2,000, $2,300 difference between 1B and the maximum levy that we set. So, if we were to go with 1B, we would have to cut about $2,000, which I think we could probably find a way to do that.
I've heard that referred to as a rounding error.
That could be. And, you know, as you'll see, the impact to the median valued homeowner doesn't change because it's such a small amount. Scenario 2 talks about using the SAFER and COPS grants as Scenario 1, but assumes the use of franchise fees for capital spending, redirects $986,000 for the capital levy to support operational costs, and it also shifts about $565,000, if my memory serves me, to other capital funds to do that, to help really shore up the capital funds. So, this is really a scenario which does a lot of good things for the long-term financial viability of the city, but it does raise the levy anywhere from 7% to 8%. So, 2A, that was presented to you previously, start date of 9-1, is 7.64%, and if we start April 15th, that's 8.32%. Now, this is just the levy increases, as you know, and you'll see in the next part of this presentation, there are franchise fees that aren't factored into that percentage increase, but that's a real cost. Then finally, Scenarios 3 really talks about using SAFER copper grants again, uses franchise fees for capital spending, and really uses all the levy dollars freed up from the use of the franchise fees, or $1.6 billion, towards operational costs. If you go back to September, that was Scenarios 5 and 6 I was talking about, so that does lower the levy significantly to either 5.54% on September 1st, or start date of 4/15, that's 6.2%. So, once again, that does not include franchise fees, but that's just the pure levy amount.
Oh, it doesn't include that?
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, it doesn't include franchise?
It uses franchise fees for capital spending. Yes, it does.
For capital, okay.
Yep. So, to look at the actual impact to the median valued homeowners, so up on top here is just that levy increase we talked about, but to really fully understand the impact, you need to add the impact of the levy, as well as any franchise fees if it's applicable. So, as you can see, Scenario 1A is $14.81. Scenario 1B is $15.71. And I would mention that the 12% preliminary city levy would get you the same result, the 15.71, it just works out that way. Scenario 2A and 2B, that's once again, using franchise fees, is $10.67 for the actual impact on the levy, and $6 per month, and these are all per-month numbers, by the way, $16.67, and you can see with the start date in April 15th, that goes up to $17.56. Then finally, Scenario 3, where we redirect all that freed up levy dollars towards operations, the impact is $13.96 under a start date of 9-1, or $14.85 on April 15th. As you will recall, the Finance Commission recommended a total 10% levy increase and did not recommend franchise fees. What that translates out to is, that's in red there, $13.72 per month with just a 10% levy increase. So, that helps you kind of gauge where all these different scenarios fall into where their recommendation is. So, the start date for 15 adds about $213,000 to the levy that we initially identified, and the cost per month is anywhere from $80, $90, $0.90 per month to add that early start date. So, as I said, Scenario 1B is, gets you just about to that, you have to maintain that 12% city levy increase to get to that. Anything different is a little bit less under the city levy increase. So, lots of information, lots of numbers there, but just gives you an indication where we would fall. As I mentioned, franchise fees are a very big component if we're going to do them or not. That shortens up or expands the potential options and scenarios, but this is kind of where we're at, looking at right now. So, would certainly love any feedback and direction. There is always timing within these things, so the sooner we can get to, if we're going to go with an earlier start date, we can start getting stuff in the background. It's practically November already, but I understand, too, you're at a disadvantage because we have to figure out franchise fees first, so it's going to be awfully hard to fully commit, but any feedback you can give to us would be much appreciated, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Questions from the council for staff at this time? Apparently, this is the completely informative presentation that doesn't require any questions. Also, this is a matter that has been before the council once or twice before, so perhaps we're all so familiar with it that we don't have any questions at this time. And I will check if there's anyone from the public to speak to this item. At this time, it does not appear to be the case. And so, with that, we don't have to take any action this evening. Certainly, if council does have questions subsequent to tonight, we can follow up with Mr. Trudgen and get that information, and then that will be part of our discussions going forward. Thoughts or questions, Councilmember Groff?
You don't maybe, maybe don't need this tonight, but neighboring cities do use franchise fees, am I correct?
Yes, they do.
So, we are kind of an anomaly in our neighborhood.
Yeah, most of Ramsey County cities do, from my research, and just a small handful that don't.
Okay, thanks.
I believe even further at the League of Minnesota Cities, I believe Councilmember Schorr was stating that we were one of the few, if not the only one, when she was attending that.
That's what I remembered her saying, yeah. So, I don't think the public understands that, is why I'm bringing it up again, you know, because, you know, it all comes from them eventually, but we aren't charging that right now, so.
Well, it probably does make sense at our franchise ordinance and franchise fee discussion at subsequent meetings to maybe have some of those materials
Yes.
back in the packet. And I would include in that, I know we had received some analysis from a resident of sort of the, and this was, I believe, statewide information as to the percentage of the property tax that's paid by different property categories, and I don't know if we have that analysis for Roseville specifically. If we do, it's great. Otherwise, in comparison to that information, I think we had done some analysis, at least I had done some preliminary analysis and passed it on to Mr. Trudgen, of the similar comparison for the franchise fees as opposed to property taxes, just to see how that shakes out and compares, and I think it'd be helpful to have that as part of that discussion.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
Yeah. And I think also there was some additional information as to how the franchise fees, well, no, that was the breakdown by payer.
By payer, mercial.
So, that's the same information I was just talking about. All right, I'll be quiet then. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I was going to comment on the difference between the A scenarios and the B scenarios. Still in favor of starting on the 15th. I know in conversations with those in the fire department that they're already seeing an increased number of ride-alongs. SAFER grants are, been released en masse. Usually, it's, you know, doled out, so all firefighters looking for a transfer or a move or something like that are now actively looking. There's an increase in ride-alongs that I believe the chief can comment on. So, it's actively going, so it seems like a good thing for us to do. I know other, I just saw something in my, one of my feeds, I think, an ad for Bloomington and others looking for firefighters, so it's already started.
Yes.
And we should actually be there as well. So, I am still strongly in favor of the 4/15 start date, and, you know, if we can get some kind of agreement there, I think that would help the department as far as being more comfortable with the recruiting and getting those processes in place to know, like, this is the 4/15, we don't want to start the hiring process of recruiting on the 15th, we want to start that now.
Right. Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. I also support the April 15th start date. I have noticed there are a lot of fire positions posted on the League of Minnesota Cities, a lot of South Metro and larger communities, so I think it's really important that, I didn't see as many in the North Metro, so if we can kind of nab some of the people who want to be geographically this side of the world, I think it'd be really helpful, and I, so I really appreciate that. One thing I wanted to note, or just clarification between Scenario 2B and 3B, we had talked last time about one of the scenarios putting us in a rather big deficit when it came to our capital levy, and that it would take quite a bit for us to get our way out of. So, can you, is 3B that situation that we were speaking about at that time?
So, Scenarios 3, or previously Scenarios 5 and 6, redirected all the capital dollars that were going to the infrastructure funds that were going to be replaced by franchise fees, all towards operations to get that levy down. What it wasn't doing was repurposing some of those levy dollars to into our funds that have a lot of issues, our police vehicle equipment fund, our fire department vehicle equipment fund, park and rec vehicle equipment fund, Public Works vehicle equipment fund. And as we demonstrated, while it's not perfect, because you always have rising costs and greater needs here, that goes a long way towards stabilizing, so that'd be option, Scenario 2A or 2B is probably the best optimal ones to have not only repurposing of some of that capital dollars to the operations, but also reinvested in other capital funds. That really sets ourselves up well. If we fail to do that as part of this budget cycle, we will be dealing with that in the forefront of the next budget cycle, and we already know we have needs in 27 budget base on these grand dollars and other needs. Now, one plus on starting April 15th is that change is a little bit less than the 9-1 start. We don't have to make up as many dollars because we're starting in April, so we have three and a half months to make up versus, you know, nine months of levy dollars to do that. So, Scenario 2 is probably what I would recommend as being the most responsible, and balances all the different needs that we have, but certainly, Scenario 3 is an option to consider. That redirects everything towards the operations.
Can I just clarify? In Scenario 1, there is no additional capital spending.
Right.
And that includes that we hadn't proposed to increase the levy for additional capital spending as part of your recommended budget
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
in August. And so, Scenario 1, either A or B is
Is also.
also not improving our situation. Would you say that Scenario 3A, 3B does help the capital situation because of the additional funding from the franchise fees, but it doesn't help it as much as Scenario 2 or A or B?
So, Scenario 3 would help for specific funds. There's $1.6 billion going into those four infrastructure funds, it'd be replaced with $2.1 million. Those four funds would be better. Not all of them are struggling as the equipment funds, but certainly, in the long term, it helps, but it does nothing to do with, nothing to help the equipment funds at all. So, kind of, yes, it does help a little bit, but not fundamentally some of our systemic issues with our vehicle equipment funds. That's Scenario 2A.
Okay. Other questions? Councilmember Strong?
Just clarification, though. So, it does, Scenario 3A and 3B do improve the capital accounts more than Scenarios 1A and 1B?
Yes, that's correct. That is correct.
So, kind of priority-wise, the one that provides the most stabilization to the capital funds is 2, but then, we were stepping it, go 3, and then 1 would be the least can
Yes.
impact.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Great. If there's no further questions or direction to staff for information, I will look forward to this coming back on the scheduled time. All right, that concludes our business items for this evening. We do have one set of council minutes from October 13th. Are there any additional changes or corrections to what was presented to the council, or a motion to approve as presented?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, that's been moved by Councilmember Groff, second by Councilmember Bauer, to approve the minutes of October 13th as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero, and those minutes are approved. Aye opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero, and those minutes are approved. Then that gets us to our consent items. Mr. Trujan, would you go through the four items on our consent agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $269,653.25. Agenda item 10B receives a city grant applications update. Item 10C approves the extension of the contract with TimeSaver's off-site secretary for reporting secretary services. TimeSaver does all the meeting minutes for our city council and commission meetings, and the cost represents a three and a half percent increase over 2025, and have been accounted for in the 2026 proposed budget. And finally, item 10D approves entering into an agreement with the U.S. Department of Agriculture to conduct the city's deer management program for $20,608, and is funded as part of the 2025 budget. That is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trujan. Is there a motion from the council on the consent items?
Some moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those, oh, Councilmember Strawn?
I appreciated the staff comment in 10D, since I've been the one who's kind of pestering about the non-lethal reduction methods, and I appreciate their ongoing attention to checking out available resources as they become available. And so I appreciate that, and I hope the community is aware that that is ongoing study, that it's not just a foregone conclusion that we do it this way, but that we continue to look at other options.
All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll once again have the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero. Those consent items are approved or received. That brings us to the future agenda review. Mr. Trujan?
Yes, thank you. We're down to four meetings for the remainder of the year. You can see November 10 is a very busy night. We have a lot of agenda items. So, we'll start off with the EDA meeting, see if a TIF district report from Ellers is kind of a good background on the status of all our TIF districts. We'll look to do some more transactional things, professional services contracts, look to set the EDA calendar, and approve some changes to some agreements. One that is in existence, another one would be an amendment, both are existing, sorry, both would be amendments to existing agreements. Then at the regular meeting, we introduce the fee schedule, the utility rates, discuss the franchise fees, as I said, and probably more specifically, look at those ordinances and the fee ordinance. We hope to receive an update from the retail crime unit at Rosedale. They've been in existence for about a year and have been making some great strides out there, so we want to get an update from that. Look to approve the city council calendar and EDA calendar. It doesn't necessarily have to be on the 10th, but that's a pretty simple item. We have liquor license presumptive penalties. I believe we have four of those. We'll look to approve agreement for a construction manager at risk for the civic campus, campus project. And my understanding is that we can split those contracts, so we will be working to doing that, and then approve the agreement for the civil and prosecuting attorney services. On the 24th, we'll have Met Council Representative Pete, Peter Lindstrom coming and just talking a little bit about the work that they're doing around transit, but also talk about the comprehensive planning process for 2050. We have a bunch of business license renewals, pretty standard stuff, but we do them en masse as much as possible as we get close to the end of the year. And I still have the franchise fees on there, knowing that we'll probably have to continue discussion. Just by the way, I was talking to our attorney that's representing us through the league for the Norwood lawsuit, and we may be having a closed session on the 24th, to give the council some background. So, more to come on that. At the December 1 meeting, we have the public hearing for the budget and levy, and on the 8th, we'd look to adopt all the budgets and the fee schedules, utility rates, and I'm sure there might be some other business items that just haven't surfaced yet, but we'll wrap the year up with our meeting on December 8. And that's the future agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trujan. Other questions on the future agenda? Are there future agenda items to be initiated by councilmembers, reports or announcements from councilmembers? Councilmembers, Strawn?
I just wanted to comment. We've had students come here before asking for our assistance in lobbying for the school board to have EV buses, and I want to note that they have a new bus vendor this year who does actually have EV buses. So, their work paid off, but I know that they had asked multiple times for support. So, just kudos to them for their ongoing tenacity in that, but, and, but job to the city, for the school board for moving forward with something that aligns with their values.
All right, thank you. Other items? Councilmember Groff?
I've been a bit remiss. Arts Roseville did have a dedication of the mural across from the fire station on the Showtime Studios and coffee shop, and it was a bit of a rainy night, but they had good attendance, and that was partly funded by the Roseville Fund Foundation. So, so thanks to them, thank you to them, and they continue to work to promote art in Roseville.
There's no further business before the council. The only item remaining on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Bauer to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously four to zero, and we are adjourned at 7:55. Thank you.